Meeting to order, we stand with the legislature reasons.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as a principle.
Very good, Katie, I think you have everybody listed here, trustees, department, council officials. I have looked for a motion and a second to approve the November seventeenth, twenty twenty five village board meeting. November twenty second, twenty twenty five special village board meeting. The November twenty sixth, twenty twenty five special village board meeting. And to file the July tenth, twenty twenty five fire commission, October eighth, twenty twenty five. Architecture review board minutes has been presented.
I want to approve.
Second.
Oh, it's second. Kevin, thank you, Bill. All right, any questions on the village board meeting? Let's dangerous. Okay, I am going to abstain from the November seventeenth village board meeting because I was not here, but I will hold on the twenty second, twenty sixth and filing. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right, opposed? And that motion carries. All right, next, anybody wishes to be heard, okay, item. Sir, could you please come up to the table here, up to the deus? And if you could please state your name and address.
It's Nicholas Schuler, eight nine nine Colway Drive, Grafton, Wisconsin.
Nicholas, are you the same Nicholas that sent us the letter?
Yes.
So everybody received that letter, uh, doesn't you know? Thank you very much. Um, go ahead.
All right, good evening. Uh, my name is Nicholas Schuler. Uh, I live in Stonewall Farms, uh, in, uh, development. Um, we have lived there now for about a year and a half. I grew up in Cedarburg. I've been in the area for a long, long time. Um, this past weekend on Saturday, uh, me, my son Winston, and my son Walden were in a car accident at the highway sixty. Wait, I said, um, this is something that's been on our mind because in the past month alone, uh, we've seen three cars speeding, going right through the red light. Uh, one nearly hit me about three weeks ago. One nearly hit, uh, their bus coming home from Thorson. Uh, and so we've seen just this kind of increase and that more is safer. So I'm here tonight because I was recently hit at that intersection. Uh, another driver ran the red light and was traveling at, uh, over the speed limit and they struck my vehicle. Thankfully, we were all okay. Uh, none of us were injured. Uh, but it brought home how unforgiving that intersection is, especially considering the housing developments are there, uh, with the fact that there is a school that kids can walk to. There's a parkway there they go out to, and that speed limit is a very dangerous speed for families to be around, uh, as you go through. Right now, the section of the highway sixty is pushed at forty-five miles per hour. In reality, many drivers are going dashing that. At the same time, the area around Quip is coming more as I said that, um, we have a state highway functioning as a pass-through route, uh, running right next to Brian neighborhoods for children and people. Trying in and out, trying to cross the combination of high speeds, uh, signalized intersection, increase local traffic feels like a recipe for more serious crashes than the one that we were in. Um, I know that Wisconsin sixty is already in design for resurfacing project. Uh, five corners, I understand this is not your jurisdiction as well. Um, but I do know that there is things in the works, uh, on the state level. Um, and so we do know that they have within, uh, and Mark sent me kind of the Wisconsin Department of Transportation things that they're looking at road resurfacing, uh, sealer replacement traffic signals and stuff like that. Um, and they're looking to do this by twenty thirty or twenty twenty eight, depending on funding. Um, what we're asking the board to do is to advocate for us and for families and for safety, uh, for people around there. Um, that they do a safety study. Uh, I know that they had done one at the beginning of Stonewall Farms. It's just, I don't think it's been adequate enough. And we think about, and I'm sure you all know what we're talking about. Uh, we were, and we were just talking about when that area didn't have lights, there wasn't a ton of traffic there because that one neighborhood. Now with Stonewall in there, there's only right now one exit. It's at the top of that hill. You have people coming really fast. Coming eastbound and so you have people coming up. It is a very, very dangerous intersection, um, right there. Um, so we're asking to advocate for.
Could you kind of wrap up here?
Yeah, I think I get the majority. And then just support a lower posted speed limit and any kind of single stuff. Uh, I've sent stuff to the Department of Transportation as well. Um, so just looking for, uh, you all to kind of join us and make this place safer for families to be out and in their community and to use everything to its full extent. Um, and for kids like Winston to feel safe when we are here.
Thank you very much. We can't respond. There can't be any back and forth, but, uh, we did. I kind of knew you were coming today, so I did ask our, our village administrator to move this over to public, uh, to public works. So it can be evaluated at that point in time and we'll see what we can do.
All right, thank you awesome.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, Mr. Harbeck, come up, name and address, please.
Uh, good afternoon. My name is Bill Harbeck. I live at nine oh seven seventeenth Avenue in Grafton. A couple of things, one, I, uh, on the proposed transfer of the Goldberg site to, um, the village. Um, I just want to, I'm assuming, and if not, I, I would advise that you make sure you have uh, opinion by, uh, a lawyer that acquiring ownership of that property does not subject or expose the village to any additional liability. There's several ways liability can come in, one through the D N R, one's through the, is through the federal, so I would approve it unless I knew that we were covered by that, not exposed to additional liability. That'd be an assurance I would want. Uh, the second thing I'd like to just talk about briefly is I would like to know what the policy of the village board is going to be. Uh, in terms of funding the O C F D. When one of the member communities here, the town of Grafton has, uh, what I believe to be Sherkis responsibility to fund his allocation request. Um, the town of Grafton even refused to meet with the board and put it on their agenda so they could explain it. So the town of Grafton is not fulfilling its responsibility under that contract. As a policy, when this happens, are we going to use it as an excuse to pay less than our full share in the amount that we have committed to pay? Uh, and, and it's an amount that the O C F D desperately needs. I don't think there's any question about that for anybody who's talked to the fire department. The twenty twenty five budget itself was underfunded. The referendum did not provide enough money to run that department. They had to shift more than three hundred thousand dollars from the personnel bucket to the administrative bucket because there wasn't enough money to run the department. So therefore they weren't able to get the personnel that the referendum said we would get. So they're, they're short-staffed now. They'll be short-staffed in twenty twenty five. Costs have gone up. We have inflation. We have the retention and, and attraction, uh, wage demands from all the other communities that are competing for these same people. We need to keep up with those communities so we get, uh, good qualified people and don't fall behind the curve. Uh, if someone tries to tell you that, uh, under the agreement establishing the O C F D, we can't pay more than last year twenty twenty five budget because we have a reluctant community. Don't, don't fall for it. The agreement, under the agreement, contractually, we may not be obligated to pay. But as a matter of policy, we can pay. There's nothing in the agreement that prohibits us from paying more than what the twenty twenty five budget says we need to pay. When the referendum was being discussed, uh, back in twenty twenty four, I asked the question, the referendum has set it just capped amount. What do we do? Costs are going to go up. Uh, this doesn't let us increase the referendum amount. It's a capped amount. What are we going to do when costs inevitably go up, salaries go up, all the other costs go up? And.
Hello, you.
Yep, I got ten more seconds.
Thank you.
Both our prior administrator and our village president then said, don't worry, Chief Rice, we have your back. Now's the time to prove it. Thank you.
Thank you. Or anybody else wish to speak? All right, let's move on to business from the president. First of all, I'd like to, uh, thank our public works department for the great job they did cleaning up. I think, uh, there was a lot of discussion about leaves or, um, or, or plowing. And I believe on Saturday, we had, uh, both crews out picking up leaves and also plowing. So thank you very much. We really appreciate that. I also want to thank the village board here, uh, for having a great session and appointing, uh, Mr. Walnuts. Uh, Tim is looking forward to getting here and we will look forward to seeing him here on the nineteenth. Uh, one other thing just to remind the village board, given that, um, Mr. Walnuts' first date is the nineteenth, we'll look to, um, either postpone that, uh, meeting or cancel it depending on the needs at that time for another meeting, uh, either hold it early or later. We'll get to that when we take a look at what we have on the first meeting of January. With that said, um, that's all I have and, uh, let's go to resolutions or emergency medical services provider agreement. Um, and we'll get right to that. Uh, as I understand, this is basically just, uh, uh, extending this contract, is that correct? Yes, pretty much. So I'll look for a motion at this point in time to bring this to discussion, uh, to approve the agreement between Aurora and the village of Grafton for emergency medical services provider, provider agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion, please. Any discussion?
Uh, sure. Uh, I think we have, uh, a long-term fantastic relationship with Aurora and Dr. Zells. Um, he has provided extra services for the fire department or has allowed the firefighters to come over and, and catch up on their skills. I think this is fantastic that we're able to work with such a close community, um, company. So I think it's crazy.
Very good. Anyone else have a comment? Right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Let's go to the resolution regarding the Ozaki Central Fire Department. Anyone else? This is a hot topic. Um, I think what we need to understand here is that the village of Grafton completely supports, the village board completely supports the, um, Ozaki Com Fire Department. And the idea behind this, uh, resolution, uh, Clint already discussed this about five weeks ago that we wanted to bring this out and we actually went to, um, have a discussion, uh, a private discussion with, uh, with the chairman of the board, uh, of the town board. And Clint, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yes, thank you, Dan. You know, our, our whole goal is unity in regards to these services. These services are critical services. And the village president and I wanted to really hear from, uh, the town of Grafton, their position. At that point in time, we were increasingly concerned that we weren't hearing counter proposals. We weren't seeing activity. And so a resolution was drafted at that point in time to really articulate for our residents our position on the funding matter, knowing the previous action of the board. Um, hoping that wiser heads would come, uh, come to agreement. So at that time, we did have that conversation uh, with the town of Grafton chair. He indicated a willingness to continue to work on this. And with that goodwill and that statement, uh, the request of the board was to pull that agenda item and just hold on this and let's just see what can be worked out in the next month. Um, unfortunately, sides haven't been able to work out this matter. In fact, it's gotten confusing. As you might have seen in the paper, there was a fairly lengthy article on this. And so the thought came back was, do our residents really know the village of Grafton's position? Because what is town of Grafton, village of Grafton, village of Softville, Thomas Softville gets a bit confusing. So at that point, given the December first date, given the depths of the conversation, given the fact that, um, as you described, success was not achieved on funding, that we needed to have some statement on behalf of the village board to our residents, uh, what our actions, what our participation, where our support has been on this matter. Furthermore, to make a declaration, uh, sincere heartfelt declaration to our longtime partner municipality, the town of Grafton, to figure out a way to work this out. They did have a counter proposal. That counter proposal was not, uh, accepted by the, um, Ozaki Central Fire Department Board, uh, to keep working on it because right now there doesn't seem to be any activity in this respect. And then also um, as for communities, we need to have a greater sense of the long term. We cannot be playing a year-by-year um, funding where we don't know what the next year. So to start to do some long-term financial planning and that's the other part of the resolution before you is to encourage, uh, over time, this is a new agents. This is our first fledgling year to develop that long-term financial plan. And, and that way, if there are cost changes, we can start to build that in. We can start to plan for it. We can sort of see the basis and the escalation. So this, uh, resolution here is related to clarifying, uh, and to pronounce, once again, it's been pronounced many times, but pronounced our steadfast for support for the, uh, fire department, um, our willingness to, um, pay a significant increase, which has had, uh, a big impact on our budget despite three hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase. The three hundred, roughly three hundred ninety thousand dollar increase we had through the lending on this. The board dedicated that ninety percent of that to the fire, which has meant some sacrifices, but that was a level priority that you had to this. And then I think also what we want to do is encourage the parties to look at this agreement. Again, it was done with the best intentions. Um, but maybe there's some language that needs to be changed. It, it is a long document. Um, there are, there is language in there that does anticipate if we don't have a unanimous vote, what happens with the budget? And so, um, short of that unanimous individual approval by every member, the four members, um, that language comes into play. And thus there needs to be continued conversation. So that's our hope that, uh, the, the board, the O C F D board will continue to work with the town of Grafton. This resolution is a petition, the town of Grafton to, to really focus in on this area, to work out with the board a, a proposal. And if it's different than what they originally presented, it will have to go back to the four municipalities. Um, relative to what was mentioned in the comments section, uh, you know, the, the legal, the legal part of the agreement says it has to have all four approved. And if it's not, it's like a motion that doesn't get a majority support. So if you have a motion and you don't have majority support, the motion dies. So we had a budget proposal. It did not get unanimous support. That, that budget proposal, uh, in our estimation dies and hopefully there will be a new budget proposal from the, the O C F D board or a counter proposal by the town of Grafton. Somehow, some way to get the parties to work together. So in some, hopefully this resolution will meet, um, the board's desire to pronounce to the public your support and your permission, uh, to the town of Grafton, uh, to, uh, find a way to make this work.
Thank you, Clint. Uh, I think that, uh, what I'd like to do is I'd like to get a motion here, um, to approve this and then we'll end up for discussion. If that would be acceptable to everybody. Um, so I look for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it, bring it to discussion. All right. Let's talk about this. Who wants to start? Andrew.
First of all, I just want to say that personally I support the O C F D and what they do. I think that the village government exists primarily for public safety. So that's the reason why we tax our citizens is to provide safe water, to get rid of waste water and to provide public safety services, fire department, police, road crew, that, those types of things. Uh, parks and recreation are a big part of it as well, but that would go secondary to me, in my opinion, to, uh, public safety. Whereas I support the resolution, the front of the resolution that says all the where it has statements. I do not support the resolutions attached to this resolution. Um, the first one, I don't support because of the wording of it. Because it encourages the town of Grafton to negotiate with the O C F D and the member municipalities. And that says to me, in the, in the words that are written there, is we want to rewrite what we already did. So I'm not in agreement with that. The resolution, the second resolution about the O C F D should provide longer-term, multi-year funding projections. Uh, currently, the O C F D capital fund is projected out through twenty forty. Uh, the village of Grafton is not that far. Uh, when the fire department was a municipal department, I don't believe that the village requested that they put out a three-year budget plan for an individual budget. So I feel like that's an extra burden that the expectation is, um, that they, they have to do something special as opposed to one of our own departments that, uh, we have. So my, my thought process on this resolution is our strongly worded resolution is going to be received uh, in the village by a strongly worded letter from the town's attorney telling us not to meddle in the town's business. That's how I feel about it.
Thank you, Andy. Kelly Harper.
Um, so I too have a problem with the second page. Um, for different reason. Yeah, the, the language says that the president and the village board of the village of Grafton urges the town of Grafton supervisors to further review the necessary funding support requested by the O C F D and to engage in active and productive conversations with the O C F D. So they have had months to do this. This, and I am not, uh, an elected official in the village of Grafton to try to get the town of Grafton to do what they know that they should have done. They have had no communication to the O C F D board uh, directly or to the fire chief, nothing about this. Um, there's a couple of dates that I just want to review with everybody. Um, and these are kind of the, the benchmarks of meeting certain criteria. On, on August twentieth, the O C F D authorized our twenty twenty six budget per the September first deadline. On September tenth, at their meeting, the town of Grafton rejected the proposed twenty twenty six fire department request. On September fifteenth, this village of Grafton board approved the fire department twenty twenty six budget request, even though we knew that the town of Grafton had voted no with, uh, President Delore, the only naval on that day. In early October, the O C F D chair, Bart Dickman, called the town chairman, Lester Bartel, and asked to be put on their October eighth agenda to discuss the fire department budget with the full board. The request was denied. On November tenth, the village board approved unanimously the village of Grafton twenty twenty six budget for the fire, for our budget, including the requested funds for the fire department, knowing again that the town of Graftit, of Grafton rejected this. On November twelfth, the O C F D staff, Chief Rice, Assistant Chief, and Division Chief attended the town of Grafton board meeting to try to speak with the board members when they were discussing the insurance M O U. During that discussion, it was pointed out that the amount of money in their line item was fifty thousand dollars more than the board requested of them. Um, clearly. Uh, but again, the town told the fire department that her budget was already set for twenty twenty six and they had other plans for some of that money. On November nineteenth, the O C F D voted on the final twenty twenty six budget with a unanimous vote in favor, including the two town of Grafton reps. It was reported at that meeting that the village of Grafton and the village of Softville presidents had discussed the fact that if the town of Grafton was only going to pay five percent of their responsibility to the fire department, that they too would only pay five percent of the requested fire department budget. At no point had the town of Grafton ever discussed any of this with the fire department. However, this was relayed to their reps to inform the fire board of this supposed proposal of only paying five percent. The town of Grafton was contacted by phone, emails, and the personal request from the president of the board. But no communication was returned from the town of Grafton administration. Looking at the resolution for tonight, it notes that the town of Grafton has declined supporting their portion of the twenty twenty six budget. Why are they speaking with us about this and not the O C F D? The town of Grafton should be speaking to those that they have a contract with, not talking to the president of the village of Grafton in Softville to come up with this side deal. So now is nobody going to honor their, their commitments that they made in front of their boards? Um, this side deal has never been presented to the full village of Grafton board, yet it was agreed two by two communities. I'm not happy with the draft resolution and won't vote for it because it doesn't address the village of Grafton's commitment to fully fund the twenty twenty six fire department budget, which we have a rope, already voted twice to do. I've taken the draft resolution and I've revised it to affirm our commitment to do that right here. I drafted a proposed amendment and it's right here and I'm going to pass it out. I'd like to move that we amend the resolution that is on the table to include these proposed revisions. I'm going to pass copy out for everybody.
Hold, hold on. You first got a vote on this one, we saw, and then you can go back and look to see if this is acceptable to the rest of the board. Okay, so.
No, if, if there's a motion to amend, that's.
We have a motion here granted to the table for discussion, correct? That was, that was a motion in a second.
But this is a motion to amend.
Well, hold on, let's take a vote on that first and then we can come back and vote to, to an amendment.
No, that's not what happens. That's not what happens.
No, I, I didn't understand it to be a motion to bring to the table. It's a motion in a second to adopt a resolution. Right. So once that is okay, there, then there can be discussion and a motion to amend is in order, but this, the motion to amend would have to be second to first before there can be discussion.
Yes, we have a motion. You know.
In a second.
Second.
Me.
Okay. Great, discussion. Clint.
So we have sort of two lines of thoughts. So the one line i- i- is very clear, very consistent. I think those resolutions speak to it. There's a support and a commitment by the village of Grafton. There's been no agreement to the five percent proposal by the town of Grafton by anyone at the village of Grafton. The second part is we have a legal agreement. And I, I would just urge you, if you are planning to make a decision to fund irrespective of the approval of the budget, that you get, you know, a legal review, a legal counsel because the agreement spells out that it takes unanimous vote. And when that isn't there, it falls to a formula. To provide funds irrespective of that vote would be different than the agreement. And you just might want to make sure that you're creating a practice that is something you're going to want to follow and you're going to make sure that the legal requirements are being met beyond the heartfelt part. So that's five of us.
Hold on, anyone else want to comment on this? Yep.
Uh, well, first and foremost, I'll say a few points as to why I've, am not in favor of the resolution that was originally brought to the village board tonight. Um, as mentioned earlier, uh, Clint said that you guys were previously talking with, uh, the town chairman about this and to give it a month or so. And unfortunately, we have not seen any action from the town of Grafton. Um, when that came up about a month ago, man, time flies. Um, I remember asking you on the phone and, and I said, well, uh, Clint, all right, if we, if we wait another month to see how the town reacts to their involvement with this agreement with the O C F D. I asked you, I said, what's a tangible measurement, right, from the town? What, what's a tangible measurement to see that they're putting in the works? Is it Lester responds to anybody? Does he show up to an O C F D meeting? Do we, like, what am I looking for, right? Um, none of that has been met. No tangible measurements from the town of Grafton have been met. He has not, and we know this, he has not communicated with the O C F D board. He has not discussed with them anything. Um, and that's extremely disheartening. Um, so that right there is we've, we've kicked the can down the road long enough. Um, it's December first, budgets were put in place for a reason. Um, and I don't agree with the wording and the now therefore be a resolved portion of this resolution. Um, I, it's um, it's frustrating to think that the village has to say to our neighbor and municipality, hey, get it together. What are you doing? And, um, that to me isn't our responsibility as a, as a, as a board to tell the town of Grafton what they should or should not be doing in this joint agreement. Um, and so that is a concern. The, the verbiage in this resolution definitely needs to be, um, Um, adjusted to tell the full truth of what's going on and. Um, where the ownership needs to be, which is why I seconded the, um. The adoption of a, of a.
Thank you, I think that's what you're saying, yeah, okay, all right, Lisa. You had something to say?
Um, yes, I just wanted to respond, I guess, to Clint talking about the vote. And how it's got to be, uh, unanimous. Um, I just wanna remind everybody that as a matter of policy, the village board can vote. To honor the things that they voted for, which is to fully fund the OCFD. And we passed their budget, we passed the OCFD request for their budget, and so it is possible for us. To actually vote on that. As matter of policy, we've already voted on it, so we don't have to honor the fact that it's for communities.
So I, I think, um, I, I can, can refer to you Jonathan, I, I looked at this, uh, um. Resolution, the revised resolution here, and, um, I'd like to get an opinion. On, uh, a couple of things. On page two, um, funding allocation. I think there's a considerable difference between funding allocation and appropriation. From, from what I see, we appropriated that funded, we didn't allocate it. So that, that's a concern for me. I would like to see that changed. And also, uh, the second to last paragraph here. Um, Article seven of the agreement provides that if all four municipalities do not adopt identical budgets for the OCFD. Um, the budget shall be deemed, um, adopted by both municipalities in the next calendar year. The agreement does not prohibit municipality from funding this allocated chair, or I should say appropriated chair. Of expenses under the proposed twenty twenty six OCFD budget, even if another municipality refuses to do so. I, I am looking to see, is that truly, is, is that an opinion or is that a legal fact? Or is this something we should take a look, a long look at?
I would need to take a longer look at it. I can give you my gut reaction, which is that. There is no more proposed twenty twenty six OCFD budget at this point because it failed. It did not unanimously pass. From all four municipalities. So the intergovernmental agreement that all four communities did agree on last year. Says in black and white that if all four municipalities don't adopt identical budgets. Uh, the budget that is deemed to be adopted by the municipality, so that nothing has to happen, it's just by operation of the agreement. Is the previous year's budget minus amounts budgeted differently for capital expenditures? So that is what the OCFD budget is as we sit here tonight. Uh, I think I understand. What the resolution is getting at is can the village still. Basically give OCFD money above and beyond what the OCFD budget calls for. Um, I would have to. Think on that, uh, just because tonight is the first time I've sorry heard of that concept. Uh, but I think the danger there, and I think your interim administrator hinted at this in his comments. Is e- even if you can, should you? Uh, because the intergovernmental agreement, um, is really meant to. Uh, provide the predictability for the OCFD. And, uh, be that sort of good governance that really describes how the numbers are arrived at. And now we're potentially entering a world where different municipalities are using different sets of numbers, and would we advise you? To do that either for one time or going forward, so I would have to. I'd have to sit down with this and, uh. Consider it a little more deliberately than.
You know, I, that's the first law of, of village government is not to do anything that could in a sense be illegal. And, um, I, I would rather have this resolution looked at. I would rather just walk away from the resolution if that's what we want to do. Walk with resolution saying that we in fact do support the OCFD. We've done that with an allocation. Um, I, and I, what I hear people say here is that the town is, uh, you know, town is just decided they, they just don't wanna be part of this. By, by not meeting, by not communicating, and if that's really the fact. That this is, this is really the town making a decision that they don't wanna pay that amount. Um, even though we hear that there's money that allocated, just like ours is allocated, but it's, it, 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 it's, it's an ongoing. Uh, this discussion really should be taking place between the OCFD and the town of Grafton. That's where it should be taken, taken care of, and they're in a locker house. So what are we doing? Just the village of Grafton getting involved, and I've heard many of my comrades here saying, this isn't our problem. This is a problem for OCFD and the town. Why are we as a village even involved with this? And it just out of good faith to say, we support you guys. We support you. We want to support you. Um, we have had a budget allocation for you, but we can't just go out and say, okay, yep. Darn the legal torpedoes, full speed ahead. I think we've gotta be careful with this, and that's why I would like to see this reviewed. This resolution reviewed, or just let's just say, no, let's forget it. Amy.
I think the town of Grafton board should be ashamed for what they are doing and what they have done. They have had ample time to come to the table to negotiate and work with the OSC, with the OCFD. We've given them, given them plenty of time. Trustee Harbeck went through a timeline. I would be fine with an amendment as long as our attorneys review it and go through it. And if the town of Grafton has decided that they don't want to do this, then maybe the town of Grafton needs to decide to get their own fire department.
Dude.
First and foremost, I just wanna say I support our fighter, the OCFD one hundred percent. And I think what I'm hearing though from the conversation is that if we were to pay above and beyond that. You know, the, oh, we did pass in our budget, I think what I'm hearing is that's basically telling the town of Grafton. We don't have to prove any additional money ever. That the other municipalities are willing to pay more, and we won't have to pay anything more than the twenty, twenty-five amount. So I get that, that's what worries me. And again, I, to echo. Uh, Amy's comments, you know, the town of Grafton is an embarrassment at this point. And they, they should be ashamed of themselves, so, uh, again, I support you guys, but. I'm afraid that if we do pass this amended, that the town of Grafton just is not gonna pay anymore at any time.
Trustee Harbeck. Yeah, I know you haven't heard from me in a while. Um, I did just wanna point out that there was one, um, error in, in the resolution. Um, it says on the first page, second from the bottom, um, and this is the original one, Jonathan. For tonight's meeting, uh, whereas Article five of the agreement states, it's actually Article seven. Um, Article five talks about referring to the fire board, not actually talking about. Um, the, the agreement, uh, by the municipalities. So that is in the OCFD. Handle, I believe.
All right, any other discussion here?
I haven't got to say anything yet. Um, so I agree with pretty much everything that we're saying here about this agreement that. Um, we really need to support the fire department as much as we can, and that the agreement as initially came on the agenda is. Not do it, is not enough of what we need. Um, I would all, I would, uh, go along with the motion to amend and then table this so that way we are, can get our lawyer to look over it before. Uh, approving it, so we don't get into other issues before that.
Okay, so what's our, what's our, uh, motion on the table right now?
The motion on the table right now is whether to amend. The resolution to read in the manner that, uh, trustee Harbeck has proposed it. Okay, so a yes vote would amend it. A no vote would not adopt the amendment, and then we go back to the original. Once that vote is done, then there would have to be a second vote on whether to actually approve.
All right, so why don't we go over a little bit on this amendment, um, uh, on the trustee Harbeck amendment. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Can I get a show of hands, please? May?
Here, all right, so this resolution, uh, so this resolution carries at this point.
Well, no, so now it, now it's amended, so now that's what's before you. So now there has to be a second vote to decide whether to adopt. This. I would like to make a motion to table this until our lawyers have, have a chance to look over it.
I'll second that.
Motion in second, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed?
Yay.
Right, that motion carries to table. All right.
Uh, I just get clarity in terms of, uh, expectations and, and deliverables and so forth, so. Um. It's, it's December first here. Is it the board's desire to get an opinion letter from the village attorney? And second of all, do you want that in time for the fifteenth, or is this not of time and essence for the village?
I, I think what we need, and I'll stay on this one, I, I think what we need is we need a, um, a, an opinion on Article seven. Slash Article five, whatever that is, I think, four lines, four oh one through, I think you had it out today. I think we need to have a clear idea on what our responsibilities, our legal responsibilities are, um, with Article seven. And that's what I think we really need to find out.
Do you want further review of the proposed resolution and the village attorney's opinion on? On, um, just from a risk management standpoint, pros and cons of proceeding forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Time is of the essence with this. For me as a trustee, I would like to see this as soon as possible, but definitely at the next village board meeting on the fifteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment?
I agree. Um, I would like to see it sooner, actually, um, even if we have to call a special meeting. Because I think we're all in limbo, including the fire department out there. So sooner rather than later, if you can.
Agreed.
Okay. All right, I think you have your marching orders on that. All right. All right, let's go to a report of community development authority, um. Can I help you? Yes.
Thank you. I, I don't have anything prepared.
I only get capacity, yours is official capacity, right?
Uh, I'm here as my official capacity as the fire chief of the Ozaki Central Fire Department. Um, but I almost, I am a thirty-year resident of the village also, so I have a lot to say. I have nothing prepared. I didn't know where this was going, and I don't think any of us really did. But what I don't want to get lost in this, and I think most of you know this, but I wanna remind you. The village is the large, the largest benefactor of the organization I represent. Uh, of the funding, of sixty percent of the funding is village dollars that runs this organization. What we're, let's, let's really remember as we go through this process that you've agreed to do, what is at stake here? It's not the type of nozzles we use, it's not the tires we buy for the fire trucks, it's staffing. Our staffing is critically low, to use a term that was just sent out today for tomorrow. We're critically low tomorrow. I live in the real world of what we're actually doing. I don't need to remind all of you just recent accidents, recent incidents that we've been at. Uh, they've been, we've had some horrific ones. Bad things happen frequently in our area, and especially in the village of Grafton. Another thing that I'm very concerned about, I mean, I'm hearing from the village, the position from the village is. We need to find a way to not pay this money. And we're hearing, but I haven't heard anything from the village now or prior. I haven't heard anything about. I've got an idea how we can make this work. I have an idea how we can get rid of this critical staffing. My, uh, deputy chief analyst staffing. I have an idea how we can make this work. Haven't heard that, haven't heard that in well over a year. I've only heard the opposite. We just heard this morning how we tried to make five thousand dollars in one year out of one of the other stations. Another community has told us, we reject that effort of yours to make five thousand dollars. We seem to be in a no win situation here. There's something else we need to be aware of, and we need to learn a little more within a very short period of time. It's called maintenance of effort. The state of Wisconsin a couple of years ago was made, uh, was a little tired of fire and police departments being cut frequently, save communities money. So they, we, we have to report every year. I have to sign a document, and somebody from the village has to sign a document saying that we're going to maintain. Our forces of police and fire. If we do this, will we be able to maintain those forces? I'm not sure. Now, have we done different versions of our budget? Absolutely. We've done probably somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty, twenty-five. Without exaggeration, versions of our, our budget. Each of those versions probably took two to five hours to do. And a lot of that's done by somebody we pay to do that. We've tried everything. So where would that money come to, to keep these people? You would, they, they expect a raise. We have to pay more for healthcare. How are we going to pay them? What are we going to get rid of? What services aren't we going to provide? I hear no discussion on any of this. I'm, I'll wrap up my, my comments. I could go on all night, as all of you know. I wish I could say the right things. I don't know what to say. I know you believe in us. You, you don't even have to say it anymore. We know you support us, but we can't lose staffing. It's all about staffing. We go on these incidents and there's no help come. You don't know how mind blowing it is to stand out on I forty-three. With a major incident in rough weather and not have anyone in the Softville station, nobody in the Grafton station. No one in the Cedar Brook station, nobody in the Fort Washington station, nobody in the Fredonia station, cuz they're all at that incident. And now one of you can't breathe and you need an ambulance, need a medic unit. Where's it coming from? The North Shore? Menominee Falls? I don't know. These are the things that I'm forced to deal with. This, these are the things that. I'm struggling with. Do what's best for the village of Grafton, period. Find a way to make it work, is my request. Find a way to make it work. Stop finding ways to not make it work.
Bill, I, I appreciate your passion. I really do. And, 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 you know, again, I think that we all support you and we all wanna be able to give you the funding that you need. We all wanna do that. But as you're asking us to come up with a solution to make it work. And, you know, what we have to do is we have to do it legally. We can't just say. Here, here's the money, because again, what are we gonna be doing?
I want you, I want you to do it legally.
Yeah, so here's the thing, that's why we wanna get legal involved. The second thing is, sure. We throw three hundred fifty thousand dollars at the fire department, right? And the town of Grafton does what? What are they gonna pay? What they paid last year, right? So in essence, we as a.
No, no, they will not pay what they paid last year. That's not true.
Okay, let me finish. So what, are they gonna match their budgeted request from the OCFD? Obviously not. So my question is, is that do we fund the services for the village of Grafton and for the town of Grafton? Is that what you're suggesting?
N- no, not at all.
I, I, I'm not asking you, I'm asking.
I'm suggesting that you fund what is needed to protect the residents of the village of Grafton. That's what I'm suggesting.
And we always have.
You, you asked a question.
Very good, and we understand. So first of all, we understand.
With you guys, they come first. I understand that.
We got that. However, we have to have a legal opinion on this, and I think that's where we're going on that. Clint?
So there's two kinds of municipal services. There are services that come from the departments. And there are services that come from contracts. So we have a contractual village attorney, contractual community development, we have contractual public works. Um, contractual garbage collection. So when you have contractual services, even if we love our. Those who collect our refuse, even if we really support those who provide the services in the contract. The village made a very important decision to move this service to a contractual basis. It's not too different than when an employee group decides they don't wanna be. Part of the general administration and, and, and have that paternal relationship. They wanna move to a contractual, so. The board moved to a contractual, and as I would often say in those situations, it giveth and it taketh away. And so those contracts have meaning and they have merit, and even if you support all the services and all the people. There is a, there is a contract, and I know it's a bit of an inconvenient truth, but it is the truth. And we need to work within the context of a contract because we did give up municipal services. If it's a municipal service, the. because we did give up municipal services. If it's a municipal service, the board has greater flexibility. But once you said it's by contract, it's now by a document that we negotiated in good faith. And so that's the challenge that we face. It's, you're in kind of a a limbo. You're thinking of it as a municipal department, which it was, but you've contracted it out with a separate entity. And now you have to live within that contract of what it provides. So it's complicated, and I know it's difficult, and I've shared with Bill over and over again, my empathy. But as your advisor, you have a contract and you need to think about that.
If I, if I could just, uh, add to that, uh, Clint respectfully, I think we have respect for each other. When, when you weren't here, though, fire chief said to the village Grafton administrator, don't do this. Have a fire department contract with the three communities, and I think they're willing to do that. The administrator at that time said, no, this is the route we're going. We're not discussing it anymore. And he advised this group on that. And I warned everyone at that table, mistakes are being made, and wasn't one mistake. It was pay. It was benefits. It was, you name it. I warned them. Some people, Amy, you were at the table. You heard that. I'm not making this up. The village of Grafton plays a big role in why I'm standing here right now, begging you folks to fix this. They play, the village of Grafton has a role in this mistake, these mistakes. And we can't now just say, and I know you don't mean it, but what I'm hearing through my messed up ears is, what I'm hearing is, we got an agreement, sorry, nothing we can do about it, when the village of Grafton did it intentionally with warning not to do it by the only expert in the room on fire service, me. And they did it anyways. And now I'm up here begging you to fix this, not to break it more.
We're not going to break it more, Bill, but there has to be some work from the OCFT board as well. I mean, that's what, we're looking for that help as well. So whereas that we as the village of Grafton are going to be usurping the OCFT. Can't do that. We need to have that legal, legal, and we will get that legal information, and we will do what we can do to support the village. Of the fire department. Lisa.
Uh, and I'll just say this one last time. Um, I understand that you're talking about the contracts that we have with different companies for different services. Um, a contract that's decided upon at Public Works and then comes to the village board and that's authorized. Again, the, this, this is about a policy that the village board adopted. And this village board has the authority um, to say, no, we are not going to pay less than what we were told that our share is. We are not offering to pay the town of Grafton's amount. We're not divvying it up three ways. They're going to be sent a bill and they're going to have to deal with it. But this is a policy and the village board made it, and we have stuck with, we are going to support them. So I don't look at it as a simple contract.
Thank you. All right. You want with this discussion? Anybody else? All right, let's move on to report of community development authority, resolution approving requests for Ozaki County. Uh, take the property located at ten nineteen, ten twenty-five, eleventh avenue, Grafton, and transfer it to the village of Grafton Community Development Authority. So this comes through from the CDA. Um, for us to be able to take ownership of this, we did hear from our esteemed resident today, uh, Mr. Herbeck about his concerns. Mark, do you have anything to add to that?
Hey, all. Mark Sauer, community development director. I adjourned. Uh, we passed this through at CDA after kind of a good conversation. Um, and I'll, and I'll call on Kevin as well if there's anything to add, but this has been kind of studied from the engineering standpoint. Uh, this point is a phase one environmental assessment going on through some of the engineering conversations that have been had. Uh, there is a requirement to uh, essentially have a phase one on the books within a hundred and eighty days of any transaction occurring. That is what holds the legal liability both at the state and the federal level. Uh, so that's really one of the reasons, uh, that was being done as part of this resolution, but the attorney has reviewed this and provided it for you, uh, all for consideration. I guess any other specific questions, either Kevin, I can take those.
And Kevin, do you want to comment on this at all?
Yeah, I think, um, yeah. Kevin Chemist, your interim public works director and village engineer, I should say. Um, yeah, so I actually did call upon someone that's an expert at Brownfields, just kind of look at this further, and he actually feels we get up to four hundred thousand dollars pretty readily in grant funding for this. So part of that phase one is to get that to happen. Also takes a lot of liability off of us. So I don't like to over promise and under deliver, but, um, we're very hopeful we can get two different grants for that amount to actually take that version off the village as well. So we've had several phase ones done already in the past. We've had phase twos done, so that's kind of different levels of assessment of the uh, potential contamination of the building. We know what it is readily. And having those phase ones took us off that liability at the state level, but having it within the last one hundred and eighty days, the federal level as well. So without a doubt, we don't want to close on the property till that final phase one is in hand. But we do want to see this resolution forward, so we can do something with it.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve a request that the OC, uh, Ozaki County pick property located at ten nineteen, ten twenty-five, eleven avenue, Grafton, and transfer to the village of Grafton Community Development Authority. Motion and second, please.
I'll make motions.
I'll second.
All right. Questions, sir and dear?
Sure.
I have a question, uh, for Mr. Kimmis. You said that, uh, that there's a possible, uh, obtaining of four hundred thousand dollars in grant money for this, and you had done a couple of phases um, to check on the contamination on this site. Um, do we know, like, possibly what it would run us? Like, what the contamination is there? What it would look like to clean it up? Is there a price tag for that?
Uh, I'm not going to say there's a price tag on it to actually answer that question. There's a stack of a report. I mean, the the length of what all has happened there. Obviously, the building is, it's over a century old. Um, so what all could be contamination, what is there? We know it's plume there, whether it all came from this site, whether it also had neighboring properties. It's a, there's pages and pages of what's all there. Um, what I'm talking about with these grants, we have state grants, and then there's also federal grants. And so that, the way I look at Brownfields is one, you want to be able to assess what's there on the surface. Then you actually can start getting grants to get a deeper assessment of it, to know exactly what it is. Then you can get grants to clean it up. You can also use that to start planning for what it is. And then you can also start looking to be like, well, what do we want this to be in the future? You know, we could have it be a park. You could have it be several different things, and you actually get the community to have a voice on that. Sometimes it's an RFP with a developer. But the long-term, uh, answer is, I do not have a dollar amount on what the full cleanup is going to be, but we know that unless the village steps in, it's never going to be cleaned. That's kind of why these grant programs exist. What, what's happening is you are saying, we're not going to let this place as a junk pile and a safety hazard anymore. We're, we're going to have on records that we know we're taking, and then these grant programs are there to help us get it cleaned up.
It, but to me, that sounds like we don't really know what we're taking in fully to, like, the full concept of what the liability or what the damage is, that we don't know what we're taking in fully on that because we don't have a price tag to what the pollution cleanup would roughly be.
Again, I'd have to dig into it. We do know it's there. We do. We don't. I mean, it's been studied multiple times. The first one that actually, the first report that I saw on a phase one on this property was hand taped. So it's, it's back, it's back in the late eighties. So no, we know it's been studied and studied and studied. But we also know no one's going to clean it up, and you're going to continue having to play the property if someone doesn't step in to take it out.
I guess that information would be helpful in the discussion of this.
Sure.
So as I understand, many years ago, um, when we looked at this property, there, there's been a brown field that has been coming from, um, either the directly west or northwest from Tecumseh or from, uh, construction forms, I believe. And what we had heard originally from our C D D at that time was that, um, that property had a brown field and has a, uh, contamination plume running under it, much like some of our other properties in this village do. As a matter of fact, I think that does also run to the north or south east underneath some of existing properties that are there, correct?
As if we. You know, I don't want to say correct to all of that, re- respectfully, President Thor, but there's no doubt, yes, we do know there's a plume underneath there. We do know it's traveling west. There's monitoring wells that have been out there for, you know, decades, and I'm kind of newer to the site, there's no doubt. But that's also where I did seek an expert that I've worked on this stuff in the industry. He's like, hey, get that phase one, you know, immediately, so you have it right before closing. It takes a bunch of liability off of you, and it makes the village eligible for a lot more funding that they don't have to pay as much.
So that's the recommendation is to.
Highly, highly recommend we close on the property, that we have that, uh, that phase one in hand right before closing, looking at you and Jonathan, just because they know your office is formalized into a closing. I don't, it's very important to me to not close on it until that's.
And, uh, that property that, that we have really, our intent on that property is to tear it down.
I, I cleaned it up. Yeah, cleaned it up. Yeah, so I'm going to give you an example, if that's okay, to tell a story a little bit here, but the Miro Building in downtown Manitowoc, that was a three block building, seven stories tall. They made the canteens for the war, war two soldiers, aluminum melting like that. And I was heavily involved in that project. Tons of contamination, actually had a part of the river went underground for a while in box culverts underneath that. And I think currently we're sitting over six million dollars in funding from the feds to get that site first assessed, cleaned up, knocked down, and re-envisioned, and now they're in the midst of trying to find out what it can be. Very similar, just not quite at the same scale here. Um, so there are some things that, that this site won't qualify for. But we do know we can at least start at that four hundred thousand dollars to help us get it tore down and starting to get cleaned up.
Lisa.
Um, so I don't feel comfortable voting yes on this until I see the phase, the final phase one report. Um, I mean, who knows? You may know something, you know, interim.
Yeah, we don't think anything new, because, because there's been no new activity on the project on the site, you know, so just to describe a phase one. A phase one is not actually going on the site and looking at it. A phase one, that's why they call it a phase one, is where you just look at what are the existing records on hand on the property to affirm, is there anything new that we found out that happened history wise on the site? We actually don't go on the site and do an investigation. A phase two is where you start to actually physically uh, do the contamination, uh, samples on the site, and we have done even that.
And, and I know from CDA, they talked about the process, and they had somebody there who has been hired by CDA. I, uh.
Yep, it's an environmental, uh, environmental scientist.
Yeah, he's not an attorney.
Yep, a scientist.
Right. Um, and he talked about wanting to start the project in the winter, hoping that that could all be done before the summer to keep down some of the contaminants if, if, you know, if they became airborne. Um, again, my concern is, we have an estimate on the new tid saying it's going to, I think the estimate is six eighty-five for everything all in. And I, I don't feel comfortable with that. Uh, you know, we have no other estimates of anything from anybody. Uh, so I'm concerned about a higher cost and what will be found once they go in there.
So I, I think what you were looking at is that six eighty-five was for the removal of the building and the remediation of the any potential asbestos was in there. It never was to deal with the brown field. That was not part of the, because the big information we had was that the brown field was stable. And that, and essentially, what I remember is it could only be built up. There could be no, um, basement for that, that property. So I think what, what we're looking for is we're looking for the ability to obtain that property so that we can tear it down and make it less of a potential issue of danger for the public by just getting rid of the building. The brown field's going to be there. It's, it's there. It has been there.
Well, so I'm going to do this terminology a little bit, and I apologize. Brownfield is any site that's contaminated that you're reestablishing. So the whole thing is a brown field. I think what you're referring to is the contamination plume. So if contamination plumes underground, for sure. We do have hard estimates from contractors on removing the asbestos and demolish, and demolish the building. So those were all used to generate the budget. As I said, we talk about budgets so much, they were all used to generate the budget that you guys approved with the dollar amount for doing that demolition and the asbestos removal. That's all included in estimates. And what was put forward, you know, by your accountant and your financial manager for your budgets as what we think it's going to cost. Now, you never know the cost, as we all know, until the final construction payment is made. But I also would tell you that as I got involved on this, I'm like, we should get grants. And I'm hoping to offset your budget amount quite a bit, because we were thinking it's going to be around six hundred thousand dollars all in to demolish that building and also reduce asbestos and the surface contaminants that are part of the building.
So talking about, um, you know, the possible contaminants, contaminants coming from the west. What if, as they're starting to remove things, um, and I'm assuming there'll be some more testing done? So what if they find they have to install a vapor intrusion system? Which now is going to like basically stop everything right there at the building, and you know, at whatever's going to be in that spot. Um, that's going to add to the cost for anybody who wants to come in there and do some kind of new buildings.
Yeah, so respectfully, I mean, this and all due respect, you don't know. So, um, there's another site, I'll talk about Losop that we remediated. That one, we knew you couldn't dig into it. So it actually, what we said is, hey, this is going to actually be open space with a park with a concrete pad on it. So actually, and so let's say that case was to happen, Lisa. You would maybe say, well, let's build a tennis court on top of it. We're not going to take anything down. We're going to cap it with concrete, and that's going to be the new land use. So that, that's where um, we're trying to solve the tenth step when we're taking the first, and I, and I mean that very respectfully. You have to knock the building down, then once you get the, the building back down, you do a little bit further testing. And then based off that testing, you use the scientists to say, you can or you can't dig. So they may say, if you dig, you're going to have to put a vapor barrier up, and it's going to cost more money to do that than trying to dig down. So do a land use plan that doesn't dig down. And so you use that educated scientific information on what can we envision the new facility to be. So as I sit here today, I'm not going to tell you what the project, the, the parcel is going to be in the future. But I do know we have estimates to take the building down, which I do know is a safety hazard. We talked about safety a lot tonight. We've been having issues with the police, having to take people out of there. There is asbestos on the property. We know for around five to six hundred thousand dollars based off construction goods, we can get that taken down. We also know by having phase ones done, we have a lot of liabilities for the village of Grafton taken into consideration and removed with the D N R and with the E P. That's what the kind of steps are to go through.
Phase one would be taken before we, uh, take ownership of the property.
We already have phase ones. I'm going to have three of them. We're doing that fourth one because we do it within the a hundred and eighty days before taking it. It adds another layer, a layer of liability protection that we've done before we take ownership of the property. Because it's already started. They're doing it right now.
Um, I guess two questions, one directed to you. If the building is removed, does that, it, does that cause a problem in the interim before land use is determined? That you've removed the building that creates a, a barrier to rain and things of that nature of water going in to pushing the plume around? Are we going to have to take the building down and then take some sort of action on the site, whether it's clay cap or some kind of impervious membrane to push water out from the footprint of the building where it was before? Or we're going to have to do something like that?
I cannot foresee that having to be required as a part of this, just because there's rainwater falling all throughout the site already. The rain guns are already coming.
And, and the slab under the building is compromised. I'm assuming there's cracks through it, then it gets.
I'm assuming it is, but I'm not saying water's getting in it. But, but, but my point is the amount of water that's falling in the area is affecting the whole plume, not just this one building.
Okay. And then my other question is, is there anything at the county level that could perhaps, uh, derail our acquisition with the county? Because the county is actually before closing age, you're correct. And then, and then we're, we're essentially taking it from the county. Is there, is there any concern that that could be derailed in any way, shape or form?
I've been, same way with be derailed as if you decide not to ask for it by passing the resolution. The state law says that when a municipality requests a county to transfer to the municipality, the county shall transfer it. So it's a no questions asked sort of manner. So once we, uh, provide that written request, which is why this resolution is before you, so there's an official action, uh, the county shall transfer to us within one hundred twenty-eight, one hundred eighty days. And so there, there really isn't a closing in the same way there isn't a traditional real estate transaction between private parties. Uh, once the county would conclude its tax foreclosure process, if it hasn't done so already, the county essentially just assigns it over to the village under the statute. So uh, do you know when that, the current phase one that's in process is expected to be done?
Yeah, in about two weeks.
Oh.
Yeah, in about two weeks. Oh, so, and, and I also would tell you, I'm working with a guy named Harris Fighters, he is like the experts of experts on this. And uh, the state of Wisconsin, which is why I brought him in here, he's charged. Give me some guidance, but I do see him coming involved, either to me or directly to the village chief. He's probably gotten well over fifty million dollars in funds for these kind of projects before, and I would like trust him on this holder. It's awesome, this somebody does.
One option for you to think about is to prove resolution that have, a little bit like our previous conversation. What you can do and what you should do. Um, to make sure that you have um, a, a, a. Legal clarity in terms of the risks you're assuming by moving forward, either through. Uh, special environmental council or village attorney, I don't know if that has occurred in the past, because I'm a little bit new to this, but. I, I would think as a board member, you, you know, you can acquire the property, but what from a legal standpoint are your. Are your risks and making sure your just eyes are wide open. Again, very similar to the situation, the fire, very different heartfelt situation. But understanding if, what, what is the, what are the implications? And if you have that, then you're great, you're set. If you don't have that, you might wanna think about. Asking the village attorney, or if you have special environmental council, just to advise you what risk you might be taking in this process. I kind of thought you had already done that, given how far down the road you are.
Did we not have a, okay, did we not have an environmental council involved on this?
Yes.
Okay, and what was the result? I mean, I think we have this pretty well agreed to at this point, because it came to the CDA's approval.
Right, and, and that's, hold on, Lisa, about the. Part of the, part of the issue was for a while, the county was saying that uh, the county wanted an actual formal agreement. Um, in order to effectuate the transfer, and then once, you know, relatively recently, the county. Changed his position and said it, it didn't want to do an agreement, that it was just going to rely under the statute that. Uh, if the village asks for it, uh, under the statute, the county would assign it over. Uh, but really, our opinion is that the agreement wouldn't really do anything other than restate what are already the state law. Protections for governmental units that take possession of these types of. Of properties, and that's what, what Kevin has been explaining to you. So we already have. Uh, the letter in hand for the, from the D N R, it's addressed to the county, because the county's going to be the first one taking title to it, even if only for. A few minutes. Uh, but then that protection carries down to the village when we take title to it from the county, so.
Thank you. Chris, normal.
Um, so is there a written um, decision from an environmental attorney? Because.
I don't know that there's an opinion letter per se, but environmental council was involved in making sure that.
Um. Because that's the first I've heard of this, and then I've asked about it before. So, if that's truly the case, I would like to see something or hear something. From an environmental attorney that says, yeah, don't worry about it, you know, what everybody else says is fine, because that's the first I've heard of it. That we had somebody.
Yeah, no, I think that it's, uh, that came through CDA that we've had that, that we've had an environmental attorney. Involved, and I think that goes back to earlier this year when we actually retained an environmental attorney. Jessica requested that we, and, and have that, I can go through the CDA in minutes and see who was, uh, who was, uh, retained. But we did retain a firm that specializes in this.
Okay, um, I went to every CDA meeting about this, and this is first I'm hearing about it, so that'd be great to see that.
Lisa, I think that we have, I'll sometimes have selective hearing, and I don't have the access to. And that I know that I did see this in writing, and it was part of the minutes that we have approved. Um, over the last year. So I think if we wanna do some research here, we certainly can, but there was an environmental attorney involved. So, what other discussion do we wanna have here? All right, so what was our, it's been such a long time, what was our motion on this? Motion was to um, uh, approve request. Okay, so, any further comment? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion carries six one. All right. Let's go to you on department and officers' report. Anything at all, Clint?
Thank you, Dan. Uh, you all received my reports, uh, the busy activities we've had the last month, so. Um, to do this on a monthly basis is really much more achievable and convenient, and hopefully. Uh, this has given you a little bit of background. I think the things I just wanted to highlight are. Um, it was already referenced, the leaf collection, and, and. You know, we do our very best efforts, it gets pretty complicated when. Snow comes early and leaves come late, and that's what we have here. We have a perfect, uh, perfect combination of those two things, so. Um, as President Delorek mentioned, we didn't have crews even on Saturday on both, on both duties. So do recognize the leaf situation, it is late in the season, and now we've had to flip over the snow control. Um, I, I just also want to just recognize uh, some of the things that Kevin mentioned, which is. The earnestness of which we've been working on this Goldberg site and some potential funding, which really is, uh. Encouraging if the village board decides it wants to go through the remediation process with us, so. Uh, kudos to you, Kevin, for identifying a professional that does have unique craftsmanship to uh, get us in the mix. In terms of these different funding sources. Um, and then lastly, um, just to recognize that the situation with the Christmas parade was. A very difficult decision to be made, and uh, with our police, uh, fire. Uh, village president, Public Works. Snow considerations, and a call was made in the best interest, and. One of the things that may not be known to folks if they're watching this is the amount of public works activity we have. That support the Christmas parade. So it's not done lightly, it was done with a lot of intense discussions. Um, and it was done with the thought in mind, if we needed to keep the crew fresh, we needed to keep our vehicles available. The snow uh, was a very, it was very considerable that it received. The timing is always difficult, but. Um, I think the team in terms of like an emergency operations sense works really well together. Using all the logistics, using all the detail, we're using all the latest weather information, bringing all the various players and parties together. And made a tough call, and hopefully, uh, working with the Chamber of Commerce, we can have this event, uh, come next week. This week, actually.
Yes, on Saturday.
That's it. That's my report, but happy to answer the questions you might have, uh, what I prepared for you.
All right, on to approval of bills, something a motion and second to bills that was noted.
I'm want to approve.
Second.
All right. Any questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, so take a motion to adjourn.
Who?
Second.
There you go.
Thank you.
Lisa and Andy, thank you very much. Take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I'm open carry, so thank you all for the great discussion.